Thank you. Good evening, and I just want to make sure everybody can hear me. I usually don't have that problem. People can hear me. My sisters tell me that all the time, much to their chagrin. My name is Ramilda Crocamo, and I am the Luzern County Manager. And before we proceed, I just want to thank Mayor Coughlin for being the first to respond to our request to have a town hall meeting. We'll be having a series of town hall meetings throughout the region, throughout our county, and our kickoff one is here at Nanacoque. I also want to thank my friend Donna Wall, who's been by me through many years when I was the Chief County Solicitor, and a great asset and a source of information to me. I also want to introduce some of our council members who are here, and thanking them to show up, it shows their dedication to the county. I want to start with our County Council Chair, John Lombardo. Our County Council Vice Chair, Brian Thornton. Standing in the back, LeAnn McDermott. And Patty Krizniewski. So I want to thank them for being here tonight. I just want to give everybody a little background. The primary objective of these town hall meetings, and when I thought about this when I first came back to the county in May of last year, was to provide a platform for meaningful dialogue and collaboration between county administration and the residents throughout the county. And sitting up here with me are some of my division heads and elected officials who I will introduce in a moment, and I want to thank them for all of their work that they do. We are your staff. We are your public servants, and I'm very proud of my staff, and I'm very proud of all the people who are here, and some of them couldn't make it tonight. I want you to know them, and I want you to know what they do. So we believe in engaging in an open discussion with all of our community members to help us better understand your needs, your concerns, and your aspirations. We have goals, and they include fostering community engagement. I want to make sure that residents of Luzern County feel included and have a voice, and that your voice is heard by the administration. I also would want to share ideas. We do not have all the answers. We don't even have all the questions. So your ideas are important to us, and we want you to participate in our government because you are the future of our community. A second reason why I want to do these town hall meetings is to enhance transparency. We use that word a lot, but I want to make sure that you understand we're dedicated to being transparent in our decision-making and in the processes that lead us to those decisions. So these meetings, these town hall meetings, will give you an opportunity to share information with us, and it gives us an opportunity to share information with you. It also will build trust. I know that there are members of this county who may not trust the government. I want to rebuild that trust. And I want to strengthen the bonds between county government and local communities. So that's why we're here tonight, and I'm really excited. This is a very good outcome and response of people who are here tonight. And this will not be the last town hall meeting where we come to Nanacoque. I can tell you, sanitary bakery was a big, big highlight here of the staff coming to Nanacoque. So I want to, I want to just tell everybody here that from the bottom of my heart, I'm very happy that you're here. And we will take the slings and arrows, because I always say, if we don't know a problem exists, we can't solve it. So right now, I would like to introduce the division heads and elected officials who have come to answer your questions, and we'll start to my left. Jim Wilbur. Jim Wilbur is our Division Head for our Correctional Services. Jim, would you want to talk to the audience a little about yourself and what you do?
Sure. Good evening. So I'm the Division of Correctional Services Division Head slash Warden. So we have, of course, the Luzern County Correctional Facility, which our average daily population of inmates is approximately 525 inmates, and we have around 300 employees. And we have a daily mission to make sure the care, custody, and control of the inmates there is maintained, and we do our absolute best. Our staff is tremendous. They work hard, and if we have issues and things of that nature, as any segment of government does, we address those issues. So, but thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Attorney Joe Jaeger, who is the Chief Public Defender.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've been with the Public Defender's Office for now, this is my 45th year. I just was appointed the chief recently. Our office provides legal representation for those indigent individuals who are in need of criminal defense. We handle roughly 7,000 cases a year. We also represent people who have mental health issues and face commitments. We also have social workers who aid in mostly our homicide cases, but also provide services to secure bed dates for individuals who need addiction treatment and in helping that aspect. We are bound by federal guidelines as far as our income levels, but we try to do the best we can. I think our lawyers, all they do is criminal defense, and we are short-staffed, but we have added three additional attorneys since I've taken office, and we have a few more interviews out there. So we hope that we're able to serve the community and do the best job possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And to my immediate left, Jen Focora, who is the Division Head for Operations.
Good evening. As Division Head of Operations, I just took on this role about two weeks ago, so I'm learning the ins and outs of many things throughout the county. So in my division, we are responsible for roads and bridges, building and grounds, planning and zoning, and emergency services. Our emergency services department just combined 911 and EMA recently, so they're expanding, they're growing. We're bringing on new telecommunicators, which is great news. We have the largest class in quite some time, which I'm sure most of you have read about in the news lately. So we're making strides in that department. We are reorganizing our engineering team. We are now more of a project management team, so as that is being restructured, we're learning of new issues that need to be addressed throughout the county, so we're building a great team. The recycling and solid waste management is also in my division. We recently renovated a building in Wyoming, which is sometimes referred to as the 44th Building, so we are actually going to be calling it the 1199 Building. So our engineering, project management, and recycling department will be relocating there. So we're looking forward to the changes and the growth within our team.
Thank you. And I just want to introduce Councilmember Jim Sabatino, who just made it, made it in. To my right is Joan Hogarth. Joan?
Good evening. I am the Division Head for Judicial Services and Records. I've been in this position since May of 2013. I've been with the county since July of 2000.
Do the math. Mary's down there, she can help you.
Yeah, I'm trying. I'm trying. Yeah, yeah, D.C., and I can't remember, like, say 21 years ago. What is that, 2002? 2002. Our division oversees recordery deeds, registrar wills, clerk of orphans court, personatory, clerk courts, sheriff, coroner, security, and record storage. A little bit about our division, besides real estate taxes, we are the revenue generator for Luzern County. We take in a lot of money, we turn over a lot of money to the county. Our staff works really hard at making sure everyone's real estate records are accurate, civil and criminal filings. We have an excellent team. They work really hard for the citizens of the county.
Before this meeting started, Joe has been with the county for an excess of four years, and Joan, excess of 20 years, and they just met each other for the first time today, tonight. They knew each other's names, but had never, had never met. And Michelle Sparage, who is our acting Division Head for Administrative Services, and also our grant writer, and Michelle keeps me in line. Michelle?
I'm currently serving as the interim Director of Administrative Services, so that includes mapping and GIS, licensing, elections, human resources, I'm trying to think who I'm missing, the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So there are a lot of different offices that Administrative Services includes. Lots of them are public-facing. Some of them just serve county employees, but you know, if anybody has any questions about those, I'm happy to answer, and I also deal with the ARPA money that the county has been handing out.
She makes it sound so easy. And Mary Rozell, who answers all of our math and budget questions. Mary?
Hi, my name is Mary Rozell. I'm the Division Head of President and Finance for the county. I've been with Luzern County for over 23 years, I was the Executive Director of the Area Agency on Aging, and still kind of am. Our division is responsible for obviously preparing the budget, dealing with the audits that are done on the county, as well as the programs. We cover the treasurer's office, so everyone goes to pay their real estate taxes, accounts payable, you know, and all kinds of support services to support the rest of the division heads.
Mary has been with us for really a short period of time, but has already been able to increase the interest that we get from our bank accounts and cut some other expenses. And I just want to say, you ain't seen nothing yet. So, and then we have the Honorable Sam Sangadolche. And a puppy. Puppy just came in.
Thank you, Manager Crocamo. I'm Sam Sangadolche, and I'm your district attorney. I am the supervisor for the Criminal Prosecution Division of Luzern County, which encompasses, it's supposed to have 27 lawyers. I think we only have 20, so we're short-staffed, just like the Public Defenders. We also have 10 homicide detectives, seven drug task force detectives, an auto theft task force officer, three child predator detectives, 40 staff members. So we have a pretty substantial staff that handles pretty much all kinds of crime in Luzern County. We work very closely with the Nanacoque Police Department, of course, and we prosecute basically all the arrests that are made in Nanacoque.
Thank you. And ever the gentleman who gave up his seat for Mary Rozell, we have our Controller, Walter Griffith. Walter?
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to be here. This is my old hometown. I used to have a business here for 30 years. It was really nice to be back in Nanacoque and seeing a lot of familiar faces. Really nice to see you all. As the Controller of the county, it's, I am the people's watchdog, and I am your voice. So if there's a concern or anything that you need to get in touch with somebody, you can't reach either the administration or someone from the legislative branch, certainly reach out to my office, and I can reach out for you. It's a really important office for the people of the county. In our home rule government, we are the only independent person who watches over the government for you. It's one of the functions that we have in our county structure of government. We don't have three commissioners and several row officers like we used to have. We now have 11 council people, a manager who's appointed, and a controller who's supposed to oversee the government for you, and that's catastrophe in the Controller's office. We do various things of tax collector audits. We look at mostly programming functions of the county that, are they working well, are they not working well? And we relay our information to the manager and the council. And we are the information bureau, for lack of a better term, for those folks, because we do have a part-time council, so it's very, very important that the controller works hand-in-hand with the legislative branch and the executive branch to keep those folks informed of things that we see on your behalf. And that's the whole point of the Controller's office, is so if we see something that's not working properly, we go to either the legislative branch to see if they could pass legislation and correct it, or we go to the manager, and she could correct it through her administrative staff. So the role of the Controller's office is keenly important in our county, as opposed to what it used to be. Before, we used to have the accounts payable functions and all of those things. It's now became an oversight, this division who looks over things and policies and procedures. So it's real, it's a real honor to serve the people of this county. It's a joy to do it every day. So, you know, it's not something that everybody gets an opportunity to do, and to serve the public is a wonderful, wonderful joy. So thank you all for putting me there, and this administration is fantastic to work with. It's something different than I used to have to work with before. Everybody who knows me knows that we've been, we've had issues as a watchdog who constantly was at loggerheads with the administration and council. That has all changed. Thank you that that's happened, because it's better for everybody in this county, that we get together and we collaborate and we cooperate, and that works way better for everybody. So thank you again for allowing me to serve, and thank you to the administration for allowing me and council to help out as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have two staff members. We have Nick Boe, who's one of our project managers in operations, and Matt Jones, who's the Director of Planning and Zoning. So you've met the, most of the administration, and so now I open up the floor to questions or concerns.
Question. How is the County Redevelopment Authority working with local municipalities to address the blight problem? I know blight's a huge issue now in this, in this county. The people are moving on, they're dying off, or moving out, and the properties are getting run down, so in Nanacoque, I know we're trying to tackle it head-on too, so how is the county trying to work with local municipality to address this?
Well, the county does not have control of the redevelopment authority. That's a separate standalone legal entity.
Okay.
But we do have a blighted property committee, and what I am very optimistic about is that this council is enthusiastic, and they want to do work, and the committee structure is going to be revitalized. And one of those committees is the blighted property committee. I know that we need a citizen member, and so I actually will put that out to the people here to apply. You can go onto our website, to our authority boards and commission portion of our website, and have the application. I know Chair John Lombardo ran the ABC Committee previously, and now Vice Chair Thornton is. I don't know if, do you want to add anything to that?
Manager Crocamo, thank you. I just, I want to add to the answer there. We found that some of the most successful efforts have been through the land bank authority, through state law that were passed a number of years back. I'm from the Great Pittston area, as is Chairman Lombardo, and I'm a big proponent of the land bank authority. Just for those in the audience who are familiar, a land bank's purpose is to address blighted properties in the community. I know the name is kind of confusing, land bank, but it's to address blighted properties in the community. The land bank, through grants received from various programs in the state, receive money, they purchase these properties, they typically receive forgiveness on the past tax liens from the school districts, from the county, and from the local municipality. And then they either, they take these properties over, they either abolish them and build a new structure there, or sell it, restoring it back to the tax rolls, or they sometimes could rehab the property if it's in good enough condition, and then sell it back to the members of the public, and then restore it back to the tax rolls. So I know in the Greater Pittston area, we have the land bank up there, it's been in operation now for probably about 10 years. I used to serve on its board years ago, and I know, we just gave ARP money last year to two or three different land banks.
I know the Hazelton Land Bank, yeah. The Hazelton Land Bank has one, the Lower South Valley, and there was also one, I want to say, not sure, I think Pittston did get one as well.
Chair?
We gave, I think, $500,000 to each land bank that requested it, Lower South Valley, Hazelton, and Pittston, Great Pittston. So we obviously take blight very seriously. Several of us on council have been trying really hard to address it. Anytime even a property individually comes up, I was actually just speaking with Matt Jones just the other day, about property that's causing problems in an ARPA group, so you know, we take it very seriously on council.
And I would encourage the public to attend those meetings, so locally, go to your land bank authority meetings. They're open to the public. Listen to what projects they're, they're marking on, and if you have suggestions, offer them up, property addresses, get involved in that.
And I just want to have this pitch, and maybe Michelle might stab me afterwards, I don't, I don't know. But if there is a way that we can partner with the municipality or Nanacoque specifically for any kind of grants, we will do that. And because, because it, we need to work together to solve these problems. And I am, people say that I'm a cheerleader for Luzern County, and I, I say yes, I am the head cheerleader, and because we have so much to offer. We're, we're just ready to burst out, and the only way that we can do it is to get it together. So if there is some sort of partnership that we can have with Nanacoque and the, and the region, we will do it. And we have, Michelle's just extraordinary in her grant writing and keeping on top of the grants, so I invite the city to, to reach out to us. Sir?
I'm just wondering what the plans are for this new bridge down here.
What, there's a bridge in Nanacoque?
Yeah, the plan for the new bridge down here in Nanacoque, what's going to affect the businesses on the other side, and what they're planning, what they're planning on doing.
Right, yeah. You know, we're blessed in Luzern County. We have about 121 miles of roads that we own, and we have over 300 bridges. And right now, our engineer, Benish, has provided three different options to County Council to decide on, on how we're going to deal with the bridge here in West Nanacoque and Nanacoque. We're probably in the final stages of gathering all the information to give to council to make an informed decision. My job, whether it's for the bridges or anything else, is to make sure that County Council has all the information that's, that's available to them to make an informed decision. I know that we want to do that and make that decision sooner rather than later. The longer we wait to make a decision, whether it's on a bridge project, or something that we're doing with one of our buildings, or some sort of technology, the longer we wait, the, the more the expenses increase. So I know that this isn't-
Because I know they're kind of a hurry, because they're trying to grab that $54 million from the casino.
Well, we have that. That's already in place.
Yeah.
And so we're in the final phases. They did, we had to do an inspection, because we had to do an inspection on that bridge every six months. So they did the top part, and they have to do the under, the under part, and that is going to be scheduled at March 24th to the 26th. I'm going to give the microphone to Jen, who has probably more information on this.
So yes, we are still in, in the information gathering stages to figure out what we're going to do. Ultimately, it's council's decision. We do have the casino money. However, we are still coming up short, so we have to figure out what direction we're going to go, and whether it's replace, rehab. So you know, it's going to be a decision that's, that needs to be made sooner than later. The bridge was inspected this week. As most of you know, the road was closed. So, let me see, I have this, this is for notes. So there were some issues that were found. There are some minor repairs that need to be done on the bridge. We have six months to do those repairs. That will go along, the repairs will need to be done, whether it's replaced or refurbished. So that's something we're going to have to do there. Penda refers to them as priority one deficiencies, and their priority one is more severe deficiency. So the, the week of the 24th to the 26th of March, our engineers will be going back out there by boat to go under the bridge and do the inspection, and we should have a full report to present to council, hopefully by the end of the month, first week in April.
Do they have any designs made up with what they're going to do if they end up replacing it, or just fixing it, or?
Yes, we do, and they were presented to council a few weeks ago. I know that we do have the audio portion of that presentation on our website, and this week, well, tomorrow, we'll be posting the different options on our website for you.
That website, I'm sorry.
It's, our website is www.luzerncounty.org.
That's easy.
Well, the best option, fix the bridge, save the taxpayers some money, give the homeowners and business owners a tax break out of their school property taxes. That's my best option for you.
Like, you're wasting so much money on that bridge. Like, 20 years ago, you shut it all down, refurbished it all, now you're going to build a new one, or keep that old one and waste more money? You're taking good money and putting it into bad money. So why don't you get the grants and build a new bridge there already? And how much does the county pay, and how much does Nanacoque pay? How's this going here? Why you ain't putting the county getting grants, and Nanacoque getting grants to get a new bridge? Because you took all this money, all these times, you shut it down, you refix it, then it gets shut down again. You should have built a new bridge already.
Right.
I mean, why not just get a new bridge put in there instead of wasting money and replay, refixing this bridge, and shutting it down, and fixing it, and crippling both towns instead of building a bridge next to it on one side or the other? And there's also one other thing, you know? I mean, it's nice, you build a bridge for the community, for the community to be used, but there's also a $6 billion cogeneration plant going in down Newport Township. Is this bridge going to be built for trucks to come traveling over for the cogeneration plant, or is it going to be built for the community and their traffic?
The designs, and they may be posted on the website, the designs, there's, there's three priorities. One is safety, number one, right? The bridge has to be safe, and, and we have to make sure that our first responders are be able to use that bridge to respond. So it's safety. The, the second is that we have to plan for the future and economic development, and this is a hub, this area is a hub for economic development in Luzern County. is a hub, this area is a hub for economic development in Luzerne County. So, that has to be considered. And the third is the community impact. You know, what will be the impact of whether we rehab the bridge, or we build a new bridge to the surrounding communities? So, there are the three main priorities, and I, I can't answer, sir, for what happened 20 years ago. I can tell you, the, the condition of the bridge, of this bridge, and the conditions of some of our other bridges and roadways, is evidence of neglect, and not just neglect over a few years, but a neglect over decades. And, you know, it is, when you're in government and you have a limited amount of resources, and you have to choose what to do with those resources, it's, you know, putting millions of dollars into bridges and roads sometimes isn't attractive to our elected officials. I can tell you that the elected officials that we have now on council have all, are all committed to making sure that our roads and bridges are a priority. And I can say here, and I, I don't necessarily want to speak for the council members, because they, they're very articulate and they have their own voices, but they, they are committed to make sure the bridge is safe, the bridge is in, in a condition to support economic development, and also to serve the surrounding communities. And I, we have council members here, if they, they want to say anything, this might be the time.
When they did that for the government for all the bridges in the United States, for repair, checking out repairs or replacements that they are, in 81 and other states in the United States. They have a budget of all bridges in the United States to be examined, be replaced if needed, or be fixed the proper way.
Okay, you're talking about the bridge, Matt, you probably have some information on that that you can share.
I don't know what the gentleman's speaking to, but-
The federal monies for bridges, infrastructure.
Yeah.
It was for, it's, it's, it's a nationwide pot of money, and I can tell you that there, we would be, we are competing, and we did get a RACE grant for Pittston.
I was going to say, we, we did, the county did, well, actually, PENDOT received a RACE grant for the two bridges in Pittston. We had a phone call, I think it was just last week, and the federal government, yes, they have money, but they distribute it geographically, and we were told that there is another program, the bridge investment program, however, we're not going to be considered highly for that, because we already received a federal RACE grant for Luzerne County. So, that wasn't very encouraging. Also, one of the components of the bridge investment program was economic development. So, yes, there is talk that there might be economic development in Newport Township, but we don't have anything concrete. So, in order for our application to be competitive, there are several, several considerations that would have to be included in the application. So, at the current time, we didn't, we don't think that we're going to be looked favorably for those funds.
And just, it, it is good to get as many funds as possible, but once there's federal funding, the bureaucratic red tape gets even more than what we have to deal with, with the state. We're, we have to deal with a bridge that's going over a river, so we have to get permits, and we have to get permits from DEP. It's a historic bridge, we have to get permits from, from the State Historical Preservation Society. So, and that's just named to two, so there's a series of requirements that have to be met. Federal money will, will, will help, but it will extend that, those requirements.
Andrew Cockburn, I've been told by different sources in Harrisburg that the federal infrastructure bill that passed, I don't know, two years ago, that money's primarily going to be used for state-owned Pennsylvania DOT highways and bridges, and pretty, pretty much similar story with the other states across the Union. So, it's a reach to try to get the state DOT to give us money for a county-owned bridge. The only reason they did that up in the Pittston area is because the bridge was so close to their state-owned bridge.
Right.
They said, you can't, from an engineering standpoint, it's unsafe for independent entities to be building bridges at the same time when they're so close to the flow of the river. So, they, through that RACE grant, they agreed to do both bridges. We have, we have to chip in, I think, a couple of million dollars ourselves in the county, but it's certainly not 30, 40, or 50 million, such as the price tag of the Nanticoque proposed bridge. The three alternatives that were presented to us several weeks ago by Benish Engineering was a full replacement of the Nanticoque bridge, which costs roughly 64 million, that's today's dollars. If you wait a year, it's more. We don't have 64 million. Most we ever could scrape up would be that $55 million loan we took out a year and a half ago, which was really designed, its purpose was to really address the many bridges that are in rough shape in Luzerne County. But even if we took that whole 55 million, we're still short about 9 million right now in present. Then there's two other alternatives, there's a rehab project, and there's another more extensive, not full replacement, but a more extensive project on that bridge. One's 40 million, one was 48 million, and as I said, full replacement, 64 million. So, they're very expensive, and it's unlikely PENDOT will fund them. We've tried, I know the administration tries all the time with the grants, the grant writing.
And, and we have been working with PENDOT and talking to them and the local legislators about this bridge, but it's, it's not going to be an easy fix. We're not just going to find that extra 10 million from one pot of money.
And, and just so everybody realizes, right out of the chute, and Mary probably will verify, it, you know, we paid 24 million on our debt service, that will continue on until 2029, where it will go down to 12 million, and in 2030, will be debt-free. So, that, you know, we have to pay that, and it would be nice to have that, those monies. I can tell you, we have met with our federal and state representatives, I am reaching out to other counties that had similar situations that we have right now with the West Nanticoque and the Nanticoque Bridge, and we're, we're constantly looking for additional funding, but right now, all we have in our pocket is this, the monies from the casinos.
Can I ask the gentleman one question? When you said 64 million, is that a two-lane bridge or a four-lane bridge?
No, they're, they're, why do you need lanes?
Yeah, but one-way, one-way, one road one-way, one road the other-way?
It's, John, do you remember? I believe it's two lanes, but they're too wide and late to current specifications.
Yeah, because like, it's only in the community here, people got to get out, people got to come in. I mean, because it's going to be a four-way highway, then I would see it's just for nothing different.
According to the engineer at the last meeting, the bridge deck will be widened to 32 feet. 32 feet wide, which includes two 12-foot travel lanes and two 4-foot shoulders, okay? So-
Okay, but they don't have, they don't have the design yet.
Right, and they're, 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 the engineer came out with a PowerPoint, if you go onto the county's website, it's a printable PowerPoint that you can, it'll show you where the new bridge would be, where the, what the partial replacement, which would be the part over the water, okay? And the rehabbing of the approach lane coming out of Nanticoque, which would widen the deck 32 feet.
That's my question, what businesses will be affected if you do that? Because there is two businesses right there when you turn out of Nanticoque, will they be affected if they widen the road there?
That'd be, that'd be a good question for Benish.
Benish, that, that was addressed in the report, we will ask them that question specifically, that what the impact would be on those particular businesses.
Yes, if you need to come out of Nanticoque, there, there's two businesses right there, and that's, that's why we're here.
Okay.
It's our livelihood, we want to know what's happening.
Okay, and we will find out, we will find that out, and if you want to come up afterwards and give us your contact information-
Yes.
-please do that, and we will, will obviously advise council, but we'll advise you directly.
I don't know how to find those things on the website, if you could show me that.
Well, we have it, we have it.
Oh, you have them? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I could, if you go onto luzerne county.org, you would go under Government, County Council, and then it would be under the tab for Agenda, Minutes.
Okay.
And then you'll go down to the January 23rd, 2024 meeting.
Got it.
And there is, the PowerPoint presentation is on its own link. There's a few, there's a few agenda packets on there, so you have to scroll down, and you'll see, it's a document for the Nanticoque Bridge update PowerPoint.
And that document has all three options that we're considering currently. You'll see the designs, you'll see what we're looking at, what, exactly how much it's going to cost, and, you know, all the other stuff, so it's very thorough.
Okay.
And they show our properties, and if they're going to be impacted, and are there going to be land grabs?
I don't, I don't remember if they did, and I thought that might have been answered.
There is, there is a map on there, a top, a topographical map, I'm not sure how, well, I'm looking at it on my phone, but to zoom in, it does show how the lanes of travel at that intersection, where they would come out. Look at you a specific answer, but we could ask, we could ask the engineer to, to get you something concrete.
And that's only if the one option was chosen.
If they, if they stick with the option two, it's going to be like, probably the same footprint as, as it is right now.
Okay.
Okay, so it's going to be, it'll still have, it'll still end up having that bend, but it's just going to be wider, because right now, the bridge is like, the deck is like 20 something feet.
Okay.
So, you're only going to increase it by probably a little over 10 feet, you know, by if we, but it's going to have the same footprint as what it is coming now, like straight across.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure how much of an impact it could be, I'm just basing it on the drawing that the engineer has posted there, but it's going to, it's going to be the same, the same footprint, they're just going to add, that whole truss part will be replaced.
Okay.
That'll, that'll essentially be a brand-new bridge, all the truss part will be gone, they'll probably put, I think, another pier in water, steel beams going right across, and the bridge deck widened to 32 feet, accommodate new vehicles, and this is all based off what the engineer stated, and that it would accommodate the weight of all tractor-trailer traffic to go over that.
Got it.
So, essentially, according to them, that there would be no weight restrictions on that, on that bridge.
So, they're not adding a right-turning lane and creating a right-hand merge lane in addition to the two lanes that are, well, there's one lane traveling north, is there going to be a right-hand turning lane that will require a merge lane if you make a right-hand and travel?
I have to look at those documents again.
I, I really-
Right now, you have right-turning lane coming out there, it's in that same lane. I don't, I don't think it's going to be wider than three, but I mean, I don't-
It's just wide, it's widening.
What I, what I suggest is that we, you, we share, you share your information with us, so that we can get you a specific answer to all of your questions, all right? I don't want to give you misinformation.
Good.
And you pose a very good, a very good question. You know, I mean, people have to understand, especially if the, the, the bridge is rehabbed, it's going to be closed, and it could be about two to three years that it's closed. So, you know, that's something that everybody has to keep in mind as well. But I absolutely want to meet with you afterwards, get your information, and we will get you the answers to your questions.
Okay.
Just to, just to make a little bit more information, the consulting engineer has recommended to the county officials three different options. Two of them involve some kind of repair, and one of them is a full replacement, which would involve building a brand-new bridge parallel to the existing bridge.
On the south side.
So, the two options that would involve repairing would see the bridge, the, would see the bridge shut down for three years, two to three years. The third option that would involve full replacement, building a completely brand-new bridge next to the other bridge, that would allow the existing bridge potentially to remain open for that full period of time, as long as it remains structurally sound. But again, that other bridge would be built next to it, and those schematics show how it would be aligned and arranged.
Okay, and it's going to be on the south side of the existing bridge, that lots are right.
It's, it's going to be between the truck and the trailer.
Okay, thank you. That's the south side, then, okay.
Sir?
I'd like to address the council on the posting of the bridge. I travel the bridge every day of the week, and last week, there was a tractor trailer and a dump truck called 40,000 pounds. The bridge was really shattering, you know, I, I don't think it's posted properly, I think you should have poured the-
It, it actually, it-
Supposed to be, I thought 10 tons.
15, yeah. The bridge is currently posted at 15 ton, so there is, there is a weight restriction on that bridge. I am in discussions with the Nanticoque Police Chief about what we could do for that, but at this point, we don't have any indicators that would make us change the weight restriction to lower that.
Well, even if it's 15, I don't see it posted.
It is, it's, it's a, it's a requirement by PENDOT, and it's posted on the approach of each side of the bridge.
The other thing I'd like to address, I've been a resident Plumbet Township for 90 years. I was involved in the Johnis find bridge when we built the bridge. The newspapers were all the bridge to nowhere. I want council just to remember the future of our valley, and, you know, that bridge to nowhere is the most vital artery that we have in this county. So, then council members and the state had the foresight, even though the flack they took in the money accounts, they really went out on the limb, built the bridge, and look what we have today, a great outlet in and out of the valley.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, and I, again, I don't want to speak for council, but I can tell you that this council is going to make a decision that has the future of the area as part of that decision, because that's our obligation as, as public officials.
I, I think, you did a very good job of your presentation, everything you said, you summed up very well. My name is John Zion, Newport Township, the township commissioner, a lot of the other commissioners here, and we support the new bridge for a simple reason. Being in construction, and you're mostly sitting homes, when you, we're all here for safety first, you're going to close a bridge for three years, and there's no safety, we have the possibility of a nuclear disaster going down, burn, people have to go out, go get out, go just one way out of Nanticoque or Newport Township. My main concern is when you, when you go and you try to fix something on the plumber for 50 years, all those homeowners will always have extra costs, because we don't see everything when we go up and try to rebuild something or fix something, something always occurs. The 35 million goes up to 42 million, well, this structure was bad, goes up another 5 million, by the time you make it, and hopefully that's not the case, if you go to new bridge, it could cost the same, the same amount of money. And that's the way I look at things, when we support Plumbet Township with a new bridge. In your argument, we do not have, nothing planned yet in Newport Township, that gasification plant, there is nothing going on either, I'm sure you're aware. Thank you for your time.
But we do know that this is a very economically viable and vital area of Luzerne County. We have not lost sight of that, it's, it absolutely is on our radar. Any other questions?
You keep rebuilding that bridge, right, the other side, like a washboard when you come across it sometime, someday, that someday you go right across that-
you go right across that flat on where the concrete site is. So why don't you dig deeper for the money and build the new bridge already? Because that's what, you're only wasting money by putting good money into old money, the junk, you know? All that foundation junk on that bridge, so. And you just said before about the safety of the, the fire companies to get there, so we got to keep it open and build the new bridge anyhow. So I mean, it's not wide enough for the fire trucks, so you have to build the new bridge, there's no other way around that. There, I mean, it's just wasting money. I mean, you got Plumbtown, they could get grants, is that all Nanticoke and Luzerne County that's involved, or?
It's Luzerne, Luzerne County owns the bridge, but if there are municipalities that we can partner with, that we can get some, some money, we will do that. You know, we've been talking to our federal and state officials, we've been talking to PennDOT, trust me, people are tired of hearing from us, but we're going to track down every single penny that we possibly can get.
And how soon, like before you think they're going to start on this?
Well, council has to vote on it, and I have assurances that they're going to vote on it sooner rather than later. They understand that the longer that we postpone making the decision, the more the cost is going to go up.
But you yourself just said about the fire trucks and everything, first response was getting across there. Now, if you close it down for three years, they got to go all the way up to the cross valley to get across, and that's two more miles up north of there. So I mean, the only way around is to build the new bridge, you keep that one open.
Our, our great challenge, our great challenge is, as appealing as that is to so, to solve the problem, our great challenge is we're still nine million dollars short, even if council decides to throw the existing fifty-five million at it.
Dig a little deeper, sit and raise some money.
I understand, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to enlighten the, the.
Wait a little longer, dig a little deeper and raise the money, that's all, it's all going to be done tomorrow. That's all, I mean, you could do.
We have fifty-five available.
You know, it's easy to, it's easy to spend the money and fix stuff, you build a new one, you have a good bridge.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, one gentleman is saying, get the agreement now and then wait, you know, maybe to pay it later. Unfortunately, that's not really how these contracts work, and.
You take the contract and build a brand-new home and sign that contract and now, like say, you buy a brand-new home and sign it, they can't. Two years later, you want to get built then, oh, you got to pay for the material, for what you paid for, sign that contract.
That's, I wish it worked that way. It's not the only project that we have in the county where, because of delays, whether it was COVID or something else, the cost of those projects have increased, and it's a reality of the world that we live in. I will tell you this, a few years ago, I was, I was the chief county solicitor, there was, Dave Petrie was the county manager, and we spoke about rebuilding a new bridge in Nanticoke, and it was, the number that we were tossed around was forty million dollars. It was a few years ago, and we were worried about forty million dollars.
Between national and leisure.
It's gone up.
Prices skyrocketed ninety percent as well, just in a few months.
Yeah, yeah, right, so, right.
Who actually builds the bridge? Are, it's a company, right?
It's a multitude of companies.
Isn't there a way that the, instead of getting money from the federal government, which I understand the red tape and the delay, isn't there a way to maybe financially incentivize those companies that are going to be participating with some kind of tax grant or break? I mean, why are we paying retail? Isn't there a way to get a discount on the bridge through a tax savings for the companies that are involved in making the bridge and supplying the materials?
They may not be county, county companies. They can come from all over the world. And we have to go through a design, a, a, a further design process and permitting, no matter who, who funds the bridge. We're going over a, a waterway, and we have to get certain clearances, and that will take a few years. That, that takes about two years to go through all those clearances.
So even if the money fell out of the sky tomorrow, we couldn't start the new bridge for several years?
Correct.
Okay.
Therefore, we probably another twenty million dollars.
But I, I'm sitting up here and I can tell you, we are tracking down as, any source or any way that we can find more monies.
But even if we came up with it now?
You still won't pay us?
We can't put a shovel, if we, if we have the money today, we cannot put a shovel in the ground, in the ground tomorrow.
No, I get that, but isn't it going to be more in two years?
Absolutely.
So are we going to use the same spot we're in right now trying to find money?
Well, that's why we want to make a decision now on what to do.
I, I just want to point out for, for the crowd here that we have almost the exact same bridge up the river in Pittston. The steel truck bridge, it's the same structure, same design, same engineering. I believe this bridge here, well, the bridge in Pittston was built nineteen fourteen. I think the one here might be nineteen fourteen. So they were building two bridges the exact same year in this, this county. I was very dismayed, my background is engineering from years ago, I worked with New York DOT, we build bridges and highways, and I'm familiar with the process, but I was shocked to learn when PennDOT finally agreed to build the county bridge and their bridge, which is upriver a little bit, they said, this is the funding, the county signs the agreement, so we'll pay our two million, we'll pay the other fifty million. They, and I asked a question, okay, once we sign this agreement, now that was early twenty-two, that was two years ago, and I think, Ms. Cockmore, you were on that call because you were the county manager.
I was, I was, I was on that call.
And I asked a question, once these agreements are signed in a month or two by the county with the state, when we start building this bridge this year? I heard silence, deafening silence, and then finally someone spoke up for the state on the call and said, the earliest shovel in the ground would be five years away. I said, why is that? Well, you got at least a year and a half for environmental studies to be conducted, because, you know, he didn't say this, but I know what it is, you can't have a single lead paint chip go in the river because of the wildlife in the river.
Have they seen the junk garbage?
So you got a year and a half minimum environmental studies by the state. You got another year and a half for the historical society of Pennsylvania, National Historical Society, because the bridge is over a hundred years old. I don't think the Nanticoke Bridge is over a hundred years old. Anything over a hundred years old adds years to the study. PennDOT said to me on the phone, if we didn't have to go through all those hurdles, we could start constructing this bridge later this year, but you're looking at four to five years before we start it, six to seven before it's completed.
Once you sign that contract, that's the deal.
Unless we have to.
No, no, sir.
No, most contractors at that level, they'll do that for house building, but they will not put non-escalation of cost laws in those contracts. They absolutely not, because they, they would lose, they'd go bankrupt.
Yeah.
Why is it still going to be closed now then? Why can't they just raise the money and get the full amount for the bridge then? If that's, that is true what you're saying, one hundred percent.
Instead of worrying about trying to get nine weeks out.
So if it takes five years, why?
There's two people talking, I'm sorry. Sir, go ahead back there, go ahead. You, that's a red hat.
Why was this, if it's taken five years here, tell them truth about all these inspections and that. So why is the money got to be here today for this bridge? If it's going to be five years, why can't it last with all these inspections? Why don't you got enough for the inspection money in that there to go on?
Because we have to start, we have to start the process with the specific designs.
Why, why doesn't it all have to be there? Why don't you wait and have all the money?
Because we can't leave future.
It don't make sense, that's all.
We cannot leave future governments, I can't leave to the next county manager.
It just don't make sense why they got to pull the money out now.
A pot of money that will only build half a bridge.
All right.
Because that, that would make it useless, that would make it even worse.
It seems like you could, maybe, maybe take some of the Wyoming Valley sanitary authorities' rate tax, with all that rate tax, it seems like they got a lot of money.
We don't, unfortunately, we don't, we don't oversee the sanitary authority.
Was it a rent tax or an equipment tax?
We don't, we don't oversee the sanitary. Any, any other questions? We're approaching six o'clock and I think that's the bewitching hour.
The rate tax pretty much got a lot of money.
Yes.
How much, how much more are you going to need after five years?
I don't know, sir.
Nine million dollars now.
I don't know.
You're going to need more by, in five more years to sort of right to build.
I don't know. Ma'am, one, one last question.
Hi, Gail Conrad, Plumbtown County Council.
Hi, Gail.
I just have a question regarding option number two.
Okay.
I understand there was inspectors there this week.
Correct.
And by the way, I was a long life resident of Plumbtown County also, like the gentleman there. Am I clear? From a few years ago, it was downgraded, and there was an inspection this week, and there's going to be, I believe it's every six months.
Yes.
To inspect it. Am I clear for the gentleman there that if at any point, let's just say we're waiting years for a new bridge, if at any point, every six months being inspected, it continues?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
That's a horrifying prospect to think that the bridge will be closed with no fire trucks.
I think that's part of the appeal of seriously considering option two for us on council, because not only is it the most economically viable, it'll get the work started the quickest. We understand that the bridge will be closed, but we'll be basically building a new bridge on the same footprint. We'll be using many of the same concrete pillars, which are all in great condition from what the engineers told us, and from there, you know, there will be basically a new bridge in that spot. And, and, and there won't be the possibility of, of even if we did build a new bridge next to it, there's still the possibility that every six months, the bridge may close. So, I mean, I know that that's personally what my, my personal preference is going to be. I'm certainly open to listening to the conversation, and we have the same, a very similar problem in Pittston City, and our bridge has been closed for two years, three years at this point.
Terrifying. If you go with option two, do you still need to deal with the historical, environmental hurdles?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, we do.
Being that we, we essentially have, I, I believe we have all the money.
We actually say, but if we went with option two, we have the money for that.
Yes.
We want to be certain for that million so that it all could get rolling.
But as you're fixing it, the bridge is shut down for two years.
That's the thing, that's the internal that we've had.
But you could be building the new one and the older one could take a crap on you and you got no bridge anyway, so.
Yeah.
I mean, whatever way you look at it, you could have no bridge.
But it's on, it's, it's an immediate issue that we're going to deal with. I want to thank everyone for coming, and I want to thank our hosts. We love Nanticoke, I love Nanticoke, and it's not just for a sanitary bakery. So our next stop will probably be in Hazelton, and I want everybody to be safe and enjoy St. Patrick's Day.